Okay, this meeting is being recorded audio and video. Anybody else recording it online or here we are? Okay. All right, all rise for the pledge.
We're with the United States of America. To the world, the religious beings, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Albert?
Here.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Here.
Charlotte Crane?
Here.
Misty Tomaso?
Here.
Dr. Everwine?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Ferella?
Here.
Dr. Jelinas?
Here.
Mr. Lakatell?
Here.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Here.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Here.
Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Sarah Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here. Okay, we have a call. All right. First up, any responses from the audience? Anybody in the audience want to speak? Nobody? Okay. Okay. All right, first up then is student reports.
All right, so everything is winding up now at the end of the year. Last night was the concert here at O'Connor Choir and the concert band was great. Their last piece they combined, which I thought was really cool how they could do choir and instruments at the same time. Right now, the Modern Band is playing at The Shire actually for Caliopi Cafe, which I'll probably go to that after this. The Costa Rica trip is leaving in four weeks, so break will break, which is the largest amount of kids they've ever had. They're at thirty-five. It's gonna be great. The purpose of the trip is to help sea turtles, sea turtle preserve, protect and research eggs on the beach. Spring sports start on Monday for lacrosse, track, softball, baseball. And we have a spear week this week, a week in Pet Row at tomorrow. A lot of us are really excited. Tomorrow is mock exams for AP science tests like physics, biology, and chemistry. And Wednesday was the ad hoc test for military students. Green Herbella did the annual trip to Cranial and Kittredge to do their STEM program that they do where they go into classrooms and talk about like endangered species, recycling, upcycling, and things that they will put through kindergarten, first and second period of both schools, every class. That was, every year it's such a great response from the students, it was great. That's all I have for the US tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I have a question, but my son came home after the Green Herbella visit and was totally stoked about it. That was the coolest thing ever, so.
Yeah.
I thought it was great for this opportunity.
It's great to be back.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Finance report, warrants. We had several previous approved warrants and then gifts, donations, and grants. Acceptance of donation to the WRHS Best Buddies Chapter from Dalton Benefit Association.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the donation of $500 from the Dalton Benefit Association for the WRHS Best Buddies Chapter as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Sorry. Motion in second. Any questions?
I lose my glasses.
Seeing none, hearing none? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up, acceptance of a donation from O'Connor Studios to Kittredge Elementary School.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the donation of $1,287.12 from O'Connor Studios to Kittredge Elementary School as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Sorry. Motion in second. Any questions on this one?
Those are O'Connor Studios and it's just a simple deposit number for a donation, so is there something?
They're the organization that takes the portraits and the pictures of all the students in the class pictures. And so that's usually when you sign a contract with someone to do that, they usually give something back to the school. So they, it was a donation that they gave back to the school.
And? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up, acceptance of donation to the Jacqueline Harrison Memorial Scholarship Fund.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the donation of $500 from Kenneth Harrison to the Jacqueline Harrison Memorial Scholarship Fund as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Sorry. Motion in second. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Next up, acceptance of donation to the Sadie and Charles Boraski Memorial Scholarship Fund.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donations of $10,948 from Berkshire to Conic to the Sadie and Charles Boraski Memorial Scholarship Fund as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Any questions or comments on that? Sorry, motion in second. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Last one, acceptance of donation to the WRHS General Fund of the Student Activities Account.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $1,000 from John and Kerry Hitt to the WRHS General Fund of the Student Activities as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Sorry. Motion in second. Any questions, comments on this one? Okay, roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Secretary's report, can I get an approval of minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second. Motion in second. Any questions, comments, concerns on that? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Can I vote if I wasn't there?
Yes.
Oh, then yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Can I get an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any questions, concerns on this one? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. The superintendent's report.
Okay, so I don't have a whole lot. My brain is very much wrapped around the budget for this evening. But a couple of things, I think one of the things that's going on in the district right now is principals and administrators and teachers are getting ready to administer statewide achievement test, the MCAS. I think the message, and you've probably heard me have written this before multiple times, the message that we like to send out to our students is we want them to take it seriously, but we also know and recognize that there's a lot more to our students than just an MCAS score. It's not a judgment on their self-worth and that they have multiple skills and talents that go way beyond the MCAS. Having said that, we do recognize that the MCAS are really designed to test the state frameworks. That's really the intention. The intention is that by the time a student moves from one grade to another grade, they will have some level of proficiency with those frameworks to help them succeed and be successful in the upcoming grade. It was interesting because this past week I attended a civic summit at UMass and that was very much around the purpose of the MCAS. And they had a variety of individuals on the panel. And I didn't expect to be quite so intrigued by other options that are potentially out there and also different opinions on the value of MCAS and how they're used and that kind of thing. So it is a topic of conversation on the state level right now. It's a topic of conversation on the university level. And if I see any other opportunities to involve all of you, I'll definitely keep you in the loop. So like I said, that's one of the things in preparation for that that we've also been doing is Mike and I meet individually with each administrative team at the high school. That includes their department heads. And we really discuss where the students are in terms of their level of proficiency around the frameworks, what are, how we can support principals. We just kind of have a round table of discussion around what our strengths are right now, what our challenges are, what we can actually do to support our students through this process. And to make sure that, at the bottom line is, we want them to be more than ready to move on to the next grade. And those have been great discussions. We just completed those this past week. Just encourage you to think about the Apollonian players. I think maybe Aiden already said that, but they are, it promises to be an amazing performance. So, you know, if you have an opportunity, I would encourage you to think about going and purchasing tickets. That's April fifth and April sixth, so that's coming up. I don't really have anything else right now. Like I said, we're just kind of buckling down at March and just supporting our students as best we can. It's one of those months that can be a little bit challenging for a variety of reasons, but the weather certainly has helped, so.
And questions?
Do we have an update on CDC releasing new guidelines on COVID quarantining that it's no longer?
We do. We do. And Liz, you're gonna speak to that, right? So Kelly Jean attends all the safety and wellness meetings, so she spoke to that at safety and wellness. So I was gonna let Liz report out on that topic.
Okay, I didn't see it in your newsletter, in your.
It's gonna fall under Liz's report.
Okay.
There you go. Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Next up is me, and I don't have anything other than Yen Yotam meetings. I'll talk about the regional agreement and the ad hoc piece. So move on to the subcommittee reports and recommendations. First up is curriculum.
Good evening, everybody. I see, we have two motions tonight under curriculum, but I'm gonna ask if we can move, if we can just switch them around and do the JS Bryant first and as the calendar is part of my subcommittee report. So.
Anybody have any objections to that? Go ahead, ahead.
So I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the opening of a new school within the Central Berkshire area, JS Bryant, as recommended by the curriculum subcommittee.
Sorry. Motion in second. Any questions? Concerns? Seeing none, hearing none? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. All right.
So we met last night on Zoom and we had three things to discuss, one of which is the approval of the 2024-2025 school calendar. So I'll read the motion and then we can have discussion. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the 2024-2025 school year calendar as presented.
Sorry. Motion in second. Any questions?
I know I have brought this up in previous years. I do not approve, I do not feel that the religious holidays should be listed on here. Given that I know that one of the justifications in other times were that these are days that teachers should be aware that they might have students that are either out or they might be fasting. The problem I see with this is that it's either all or none. Is there plenty of other fasting days and days that students may be out besides these major ones here?
I think, again, they can, this can be addressed next year, but these are more of the major ones and we do have some hand pockets of students where kids need to be out. So there are other holidays where the teachers do need to be aware. We can make note to put them on the calendar next year. But to me, it just sort of, I mean, I don't necessarily know if Hanukkah, Kwanzaa needs to be on the calendar as religious holidays because it falls during winter break this year, but other than that. And then we did also talk about Good Friday. Again, that came up because it has come up in the past this year, this upcoming year. Good Friday actually happens to be the Friday before spring break, so it just sort of makes sense as that's going to be the day off, given that all the teachers have so many holidays. But we were discussing that maybe in the years going forward that you survey the teachers or maybe the families to see how many kids and staff will be out Good Friday. And I know that Amy Jelinas brought this up last night. Traditionally, that's a day where lots of staff and students tend to take the day off. But we just don't know how true that is anymore in today's, in today, in today's day and age. So, I mean, it could be that maybe we just give the Friday before spring break off or maybe the Monday after Easter if we think that people are gonna be traveling and won't be in school because, not because of the religious holiday necessarily, but because of traveling. So. But other than that, everything seems pretty standard on the school calendar.
Any other comments, concerns?
I would just, same thing as last year. I don't think this calendar needs more jobs than to tell us when we're in school or not, but it is what it is.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. Liz again.
May I recommend an amendment to remove the religious holidays? This was said last year that we'll look at it next year and now it's next year and it doesn't handle this year either, so.
You're okay to make a motion.
Okay. I motioned to remove the religious holidays from the 2024-2025 calendar.
One second, huh?
I got a second. Okay. Any more discussion about that?
Do you just, do you just mean this box here?
Just this box. And then I could take or leave the Good Friday, but I do understand the argument about saying that it's, you know, the day before and most people, or many people do take off that day anyway.
You could just not list it as Good Friday.
Or just not even list as Good Friday.
Correct.
So any religious holiday that is not a federal holiday.
Right.
The only comment I have is on the other side of the paper. It says half day for all district students. If there's a six-day snow day for the district, would make it up on the half day of school on Good Friday.
So.
So I mean, everybody's gonna take it to off anyway.
Well, let's address the motion right now. The motion is to remove the religious holiday.
Right.
So any other comments about removing the religious holidays? Seeing none? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Just, we're talking about just removing that box.
Just removing the holiday box?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Kraftreese?
No.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie D. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Abstain.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
No.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazuri?
No.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
No. Let's recount. So the answer is yes to remove the religious holidays box, just the box. Okay, any other?
Just the vote.
Who was, sorry, it was ten?
It was ten yes, one, two, three, four, no.
And one abstain.
And one abstain.
Okay, so we're gonna remove the religious holidays from the calendar. Any other?
Let me ask a question. The half day and service days, what determined when we were going to do those? I know there's several, maybe it's a different answer for each, but.
We try to stretch it out throughout the year. So it's a little bit more concentrated in the fall because a lot of times when you're working together as a group, what you're trying to do is collectively build knowledge and expertise around teaching and learning or around social and emotional support. And it's gonna be more beneficial to teachers in terms of supporting students if you have that, if you upfront those days. And, but they're also, that's been sort of fairly consistent throughout the years, so it's fairly consistent. The days are similar. I mean, obviously, they fall on different, different days, but the timing is similar to what it was this past year.
Yeah. But we had comments last year about that and we wanted it, you know, wanted to line up with the county if possible. And apparently, there was no attempt to do that. Is that correct?
I haven't had a lot of feedback in terms of wanting to do that at this point from teachers. And I think the other thing is when we looked at our strategic plan, one of the things that we've talked about is wanting to make sure that the professional development is in line with our strategic plan. And while I do agree that the countywide offerings can be great, we don't know right now if they line up with our strategic plan. That's been the biggest hurdle for us and barrier in terms of moving forward.
We also, we do upon request, let teachers go to that PD and we actually hosted one last year on that day at O'Connor.
So we do participate. So any teacher that wants to go can go on that day. And like Mike said, we did host one here. So we're, we're definitely open to it. We support it, but we have not put it in our calendar.
And Dave?
How did, how have you determined interest? I mean, have you asked teachers?
No, I haven't. I haven't. I specifically, usually I depend on the CBA leadership team to determine interest. Usually they go to them and then they come see me.
Kind of query everybody and then?
Yeah, because they go to their representatives in their buildings. So I do it that way.
Okay. Anything else? Mike, you wanna, you had a comment about the snow days?
No, just for the discussion of Good Friday. Somebody said, you know, most of the kids take it off and then we have a schedule as a possible snow day replacement.
Yeah.
I just think that's because it's the next nearest holiday after we know we're done with snow days.
I don't think we gotta worry about that.
This year.
One year ago today.
Can we get this the last one?
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns on the calendar?
I just wonder, like, we just took out the religious holidays, but we're leaving in Good Friday?
Yeah.
We took out the box.
So I thought we were just gonna list it as April eighteenth.
I just wrote L in that.
Huh?
I thought we were just listing it as April eighteenth, like, day off.
Yeah.
That wasn't part of that motion? The motion was to remove the box?
Yeah.
Right. But you're still listing Good Friday on there.
Which is why I said no.
Right.
So.
If you're gonna do it, do it.[1535.88]
Any other motion? Are we all set?
Motion to remove reference to Good Friday, both in the list in the middle and for the half day. Just refer to it as.
Second.
Whatever, eighteen.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to remove the words Good Friday on the calendar. Any discussion on this?
I'll just make the comment that I think Good Friday should stay up there because it's an actual day that's referenced, and there's an X through it, and there's another reference with a half day piece on there, whereas these in the box here don't specifically have attachment to X nowadays, if that makes sense. That's my comment.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Um, how would we label this? We would just label it April something.
Day off.
The Friday of Friday before Easter.
No.
How would we delay what we're gonna do?
I mean, you could, you could say, you could start, you could add it to the spring break.
You could add it to the spring break.
On the eighteen.
You would add it to the spring break. You would just call it, you would roll it into as being part of spring break. That, that would.
Spring vacation.
Right, this year, you can go with that.
Right.
Next year, you have to give you something else, huh?
Pretty much.
You could just write no school.
You could, or no school or spring long weekend.
Yeah.
Something like that. You wanted to do it that way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions?
Rich Case, so the motion is, the motion is to remove the reference to Good Friday listed on April eighteenth.
Yes.
Period. Okay, thanks.
The, the two references to Good Friday, and then in the half day section.
Yep. That'll come off anyway when you do that. Yeah, that's just a reference on the bar. Yep, thank you.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
No.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crapthrees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes, I want her removed.
But you wanted the box.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
No.
Mr. Lacatelle?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazori?
Yes.
Ms. Lowsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thirteen to two.
Yeah.
Just to clarify my thinking, if none of the other holidays are mentioned, then Good Friday should not be mentioned either. That was my thinking.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, anything else on that? We gotta, we gotta approve the calendar now that it's amended twice. Anything else on the calendar? The thing that I thought wasn't going to be controversial.
Motion to approve the calendar as amended.
Wait, I think we already had the motion?
Yes. So do I have to redo the motion?
No, he just said motion as amended.
Right.
Second.
Second. Any other questions? Not here, good, see, good? Wow, we can roll call vote on the calendar.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crapthrees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lacatelle?
Yes.
Ms. Ladazori?
Yes.
Ms. Lowsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else?
Okay, so. We also heard an update from Assistant Superintendent Mike Knoll on the Curriculum Council. So when last we discussed this, the group had simult, decided to simultaneously pilot both EL and Wisdom Programs for K through A. Piloting began as of last week. Each pilot group contains eleven teachers. The teachers have started filling out feedback note catchers in real time so they can capture what they think of the program and give types of feedback, generally whether it's positive feedback, negative feedback, a question for the vendor, how it aligns to the standards, and then the area of the feedback that's technical or a program task or test quality. So far, there are nine pages of feedback. All feedback, feed, uh, feedback will be put into a scoring rubric and then open for discussion with all parties, uh, in the Curriculum Council for final decision to be made in April, in April. Official selection announcement to staff will happen April twenty-second. Contracts will be signed, and PD, Professional Development is to start May seventeenth. Cost of the programs are both, are about the same, and the hundred, a hundred thousand dollar grant that we have will cover at least three years of the program, depending on what materials, program enhancements, and professional development options we choose. And then, uh, we will come back and discuss it at curriculum and curriculum next month to hear about what the final decision is. And then Superintendent Mike, Assistant Superintendent Mike Knoll also gave a presentation on winter benchmarkings for grades K through ten. They do quarterly assessments with benchmarking done three times a year and MCAS being the fourth, um, of those. There are two ways of assessing the data. There's looking at the student skills against their cohorts across the country, and then looking again at the same students against their cohort, against the state and the state standards. The evaluation teams are made up of Leslie and Mike and the building administration, subject team leaders and curriculum coordinators. They use three different tools for benchmarking, um, K through, uh, for grades, K through six, and then two for grades seven through ten. Amplify by Dibbles, which is relatively new, is the one that we do for K through six, and it's a reading, it measures reading fundamentals, and it's also a dyslexia screener. This measures, uh, against, uh, coun, countrywide standards for alphabet principles, phonemic awareness, said that correctly, um, sound fluency and comprehension. The benchmarking showed that grades K through two are doing very well and are showing tremendous growth mid-year. Grades three through five, uh, growth usually slows as studies have showed it's a little tougher to teach reading fundamentals past the second grade without some form of intervention. What you typically want to see in fifth grade is that students are at or above the sixty percent mark at this point in the year. Our fifth graders are at sixty-four percent. The district would like to see that number closer to seventy percent, so there's a little work to do, but we're still in good shape. Our third graders are a worry spot. They showed a decrease to the national, uh, levels this year in reading fluency and comprehension, so some interventions are being explored to see how best to help guide these students to get where they should be by fifth grade. For sixth grade, since this benchmark wasn't used for them in elementary school, this is just sort of used as a dys, uh, dyslexia screener and any other types of issues that they may have with comprehension and reading. It did show that forty-three percent of the sixth graders are reading below grade level. When blocks were used to, as a support mechanism for this group, they were able to move eight percent more back to reading at proficiency, the grade level proficiency, but it also showed that, showed administration that there really is no, are no good interventions to help kids increase their reading skill levels in middle school. The next, uh, tool for benchmarking is Ames Web. It's math for grades three through five. This is a skills-based assessment tool, and it's a little outdated, so administration will be looking to see how we can replace it going forward. But the tiering for it is much like Edge Elastics. Edge Elastics, uh, is used in grades three through ten. It's the program where they use old MCAS questions to teach, to test kids and benchmark for state standards. In ELA through grades three through five, there's, graders are showing growth from the beginning of the year till now with proficiency to state standards, with the biggest jump being third grade. Sixth grade also had a tremendous jump, while seventh and eighth grade maintained, which is actually good, uh, 'cause usually you see declines across the state in, for those grades. Narrative writing is an area of concern for sixth and seventh graders, uh, and inferences are a concern for eighth. Tenth grade also made a big jump, uh, creating, uh, what they found was creating an environment for benchmarking similar to the environment that, where they take MCAS, which is just in a room, not during a class period, but you're taking your benchmarking exams like you would be taking your MCAS, really made the kids take it more seriously, and the scores went up. Math, uh, third grade had a big jump like they did in ELA, um, to around fifty-three percent. Fourth and fifth graders are hovering around forty-three percent, which is an area of concern. Uh, state level is, statewide proficiency is about forty percent, but we wanna be better. Sixth grade also had a huge proficiency jump to about sixty-four percent, uh, while seventh and eighth graders are maintaining, but still under fifty percent. Teachers participated in three intensive sessions of PD with our Holyoke, which helped them to reframe how they would like to teach math. Other subjects are also starting to step up in teaching math standards where, where they're found to be, to pertain to the subject matters, like geometry is being taught in advanced engineering, measurement conversion is being taught in science, box, box plots and graphing and social studies. Tenth grade ended last year with sixteen percent proficiency and is now sitting at sixty percent. A credit goes to the math interventionist, uh, for this jump, where they can take the live data as kids are answering questions and then digest what's happening per student and deliver individualized, real-time help. Science, Edge Elastic benchmarks, uh, saw growth in fifth, eighth, and tenth, especially in high school biology. Once we get a look at the new science MCAS, we'll have a better benchmark, idea of what kind of benchmarking methods we need and maybe some guidance on curriculum needs. Next steps are for administration to break down all the data and figure out what areas to target for student help between now and MCAS time. Benchmarking reports were also sent out to all elementary school families for the first time this year as a tool to show families where their children are sitting skills-wise, and also as a way to help Title I tutors, uh, tailor needs to particular students. The plan is for next year to expand benchmarking letters to all, uh, families through grade ten, and the district is looking to expand, uh, universal screenings for dyslexia and other learning, reading learning disabilities from K through six to K through ten in the future. Our next curriculum subcommittee meeting will be, uh, Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, at seven PM on Zoom, where we will hear from the Curriculum Council on the final ELA curriculum selection, and Mike Knell will also go over the new science MCAS and potential for new science curriculum piloting.
You did a great job, Sean.
As you can tell from Ellen's report, which was very comprehensive, what was presented to us by Mike Knell was very comprehensive.
Yes.
And I just wanna say that, um, as long as it was, it was really worthwhile because not only did we get a sense of how our students are doing, but even more importantly, how the district is approaching growth, the things that they're doing, uh, and very specifically. And it, it was very enlightening, and I think it just is a credit to our superintendent, assistant superintendent principals, that, that they're really, uh, focused on making this a terrific district for our children. And I just want to put my two cents in about that.
And I think this was super important because it's very hard to digest the MCAS information when it comes out. This was more grabbable, and we can see where each grade had its issues, and it's nice to know that everyone's really getting, trying to wrap their hands around what it is that we need to do to help make these students as successful as they can be. It just, it still is a little strange that kids are doing well on the state standards, but not as well on the national standards. Still a little hard to wrap my head around that one, but I mean, I guess it, it just is what it is.
The, the discrepancy, I think, is that the, the nationally normed test is really measuring skills that progress. So the testing is actually different throughout the year, um, and the standards don't change. So like, the, the, the test is static for, um, for the standards, so you can make more growth towards that, whereas the, the target is always moving, and if you're not, if you're already behind, if you're not growing faster than a year's worth of growth, then you're always going to be behind, and you'll actually start going backwards, which is why third, fourth, and fifth grade, we see that, um, it's harder to catch up. So that, like, the, the, the reading data really is a moving target for kids. It's just, that's one way to explain it.
Any other question? Comment? Thank you, Ellen. That was comprehensive. Thanks. Okay, next up is, uh, finance.
We don't got nothing to do tonight, right?
Only take a minute. So, good evening, everyone. Have the finance committee met on February twenty-ninth at Wakanah. Superintendent Leslie Blake Davis, in the area of Finance Operations for Wakanah, informed us that nothing had material, materially changed in the budget from our last presentation except for FICA costs, which were updated. We were also informed of a CPPI grant to provide funding for early childhood education. The grant involves community partnerships, and if, if it is awarded, it could offset some operational costs, so hopefully we get that. There was much discussion around the assessment of, uh, assess, assessment to the towns and how we could use more funds potentially from rural aid to offset, uh, further assessments, or offset the assessments further. And the committee moved to increase the rural aid contribution to revenue, which brought the average assessment to towns down to about two percent. It was determined as soon as new rural aid numbers were provided to us from the state, the finance subcommittee would reconvene and plan to, um, dig into that to determine what those impacts would be on future budgets. There was discussion around how the capital budgets and operating budgets should be defined and allocated, as there seems to be, um, different interpretations at different districts around the state. We briefly discussed the regional agreement, but there, at the time, there were no material changes, uh, as long, along with no updates from the towns. Our next meeting is Monday, March eighth, at six-thirty here. Times for discussion will include, uh, the brochure for towns and Central Berkshire's audit review.
Okay, anyone else? Presenting the budget or?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Sorry.
April eight?
Who's that?
Was that, you said March eighth, Monday, March eighth. Do you mean April?
I mean April.
I should know these things. Gotta go forward.
March eighth.
Nope.
I think it's, I think it's only March eighteenth. It says upcoming Monday, March eighteenth, I think it is.
It's next Monday, right?
Oh, it's March eighteen.
March eighteen. Yeah, I forgot a one. That's pretty important, March eighteenth, which is next Monday.
Okay, thanks, Paul. We're gonna do the presentation before the, before the votes, yes.
So, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, much of what you're gonna see tonight in the budget is very similar to what you saw last week or a couple weeks ago, um, and similar to what you saw when we presented the initial budget. We did meet in finance, as you know, we've been working very closely and collaboratively with the finance subcommittee. One of the discussions that we had that you also just heard from member, um, Paul Ferella, is how we could offset the assessments to the towns, um, more than we had listed in the tentative budget. So what you're gonna see in this budget is a lower average assessment to the towns than what you saw in the other, in the budget when, that was approved, the tentative budget that was approved. Some of the things that, um, the, I'm gonna go to the goals. So the goals, um, are very much the same. We prioritize being fiscally responsible to our towns, but we also balance that at the same time with prioritizing, um, offering high-quality educational opportunities to our students. We are still somewhat feeling, as, as you can imagine, um, the, the results of, um, students not being in school a few years ago. Our third graders are probably feeling it the most. What we're seeing and, and what we're looking at and what Ellen in, was referring to in the assistant superintendent's presentation is basically that we have been able to move more students with three tiers. We've been able to move more students into tier one. Just being in school, solid, really, um, instruction, hard-working teachers, we're definitely seeing some movement. What we're most concerned about, um, at this point would be those students who are in tier two hovering maybe on tier three, and what that means is they need more support than most students. They, and, and at times, they need substantially separate, um, programming and a real level of expertise to help them, uh, really progress with their foundational skills in ELA and math. So, as you know, we did discontinue our Title I tutors. We are gonna be looking, we're gonna have a very concentrated approach, but we are gonna be watching very carefully this year to see, um, how we do with slightly, with, with, not necessarily without those supports, but not, but to see, do we need to think about, um, an additional reading interventionist next year, an additional math interventionist coming up, um, because we are definitely seeing a need where we value those, that expertise that some of those teachers have, um, and that's, that's our biggest area of concern right now, moving forward.
So this slide is very similar to what you've seen in the past. So this is something new that we're showing this year. This is our gross revenue for the budget. So this is using our operating funds, revolving revenue or grant revenue. So what made up the budget for the tentative budget is pretty much the same, we're just moving around funds. So like Leslie said, we're using more of the FY twenty-five rural aid funds instead of operating funds next year. So this screen is pretty similar to what you saw at the tentative budget. Overall, these are the increases and decreases that you see in the FY twenty-five final budget. Salary increases, um, that includes contractual increases, FICA taxes, which we pay for payroll to, um, payroll, and then we did add a one FTE teacher at Craneville, um, just for class sizes. So increases for salaries are about six hundred eighty-three thousand. Transportation, we are moving into year three of a five-year contract. We do see a three percent increase year over year, so it's right around fifty thousand. We saw increases for both active health insurance and retiree health insurance of, um, retiree hun, retiree health insurance back on January first of twenty twenty-four of a five-point five percent increase, and we're gonna see a seven percent increase for active this coming July. Berkshire County Retirement saw an increase as well. That is a amount that is set by Berkshire County Retirement, so all of our teachers are part of MTRS. Our custodians are assistants, paraprofessionals, they're part of Berkshire County Retirement. We are hopefully gonna see the last, um, band payment in our operating budget, so this is an increase of a hundred twenty-one thousand, that is for the band interest and part, part of the premium. The last large increase we saw this year was special ed tuition. We did have some kids move into the district or move out into placements after the budget was approved last year, so this is the first time that it's being added to the operating budget. There were a couple decreases overall. We had some salary decreases amounting just around, just under two hundred fifty thousand. That's the reduction of a one FTE STEM teacher, five Title I tutors, and then two FTEs, RBTs or registered behavior technicians. We are also seeing a decrease in our charter school tuition. There is also a charter school, um, re, charter school revenue that we, um, we also get from the state, but that's much smaller, so that also decreased. Overall, we had increases of two mil, two-point-two million and decreases of just under four hundred thousand, so that does add up to that one-point-eight increase you saw on the previous slide. This slide shows, um, some of the, so this shows the other funds that are using for salaries in the FY twenty-five budget. The only change on this screen was the rural aid. So if you look at the very bottom gre, green line on the left-hand side, that did increase by about two hundred fifty thousand from where it was in the tentative. So these grant funds make up just about twelve percent of our salaries, revolving funds make up about five percent, and then the operating makes up the other eighty-three percent. We are also using some of FY twenty-four rural aid to help offset our budget. That's through prepaid tuition for some of our special ed students, and we're also prepaying some of our expenses that we were able to, um, in FY twenty-four for FY twenty-five. We are also, year over year, we do see circuit breaker revenue from the state, so that is something that's always been there. Just about two hundred fifteen thousand will be used for special ed tuition next year as well. So overall, we are offsetting the budget by four-point-four million dollars, and that's where we're sitting for the, the general fund, uh, revenue, or general fund operating budget at four-point-four million, or thirty million, nine-nine-three. Or $30,993, that'd be nice, but. So, where we're sitting right now, year over year, is a 2.28% increase, or just, just under $700,000, so $692,282. The revenue projection, so this slide has not changed pretty much at all since our tentative. With the exception of when we moved around the money from to rural aid, the town assessments did decrease. So, those are sitting at a 2.01 currently, or a $352,000, $352,567 variance year over year. The next few slides have not changed, so I'll go through it pretty quickly, but stop me if you have any questions. So, this makes up our five-year rolling average for our operating assessments. So, from October 2019 through October 2023, that makes up the five-year rolling average for each of the towns. So, you can see Beckett's sitting at a 9.66, Washington at 3.91. We also added in that column for school choice students, which is the third from the right. We have remained pretty steady with our school choice. The other column would be tuition-based preschool students, so if you see that one. This is just a chart that's showing the previous slide. You can see we've been pretty steady. The bottom one is our school choice students. And then, if you go to the red one in the middle, that is our district students. So, if they are living in one of our seven towns, we have seen an uptick in both the, our district students and students overall, the top green line. So, this slide shows the makeup of where our students are in one of our five, five schools. So, Becca, Washington, Kittredge, Nessicus. So, you can see that 29% of our students are at Craneville, and then 23 are at Nessicus. This is as of October 1, 2023. These, this shows our certified FTEs by school. This has not changed since, I believe, the tentative budget. And you can see that, for instance, for art at the elementary schools, .2, we have a .2 at Beckett, we have a .2 at Kittredge, .6 at Craneville. It changes a little bit with the high school. You can see there's a .6 at Nessicus, but 1.4. It's just, you can see a higher at the high school just because of the programming needs. And we use that to kind of look to see where our students are and where our certified FTEs are. So, you can see that they are pretty close. They all come between, I think, a 2 and a 5% change. But you can see that 6% of our students are at Beckett, 8% of our staff are there. 23% of our students are at Nessicus, 23% of our staff. So, there are some that are a little farther off, but like I said, that has to really do with the, the programming at the high school, for instance. So, this is where we're sitting for the town assessments. Overall, it's a 2.01% increase year over year. That does change within the town, so that, two factors come into play for that. One is the required local contribution, which is set by DESI. And the other piece is, or I should say calculated by DESI. The other piece is that five-year rolling average. That goes in, what comes to play is the required contribution, plus the budget balance, and then the transportation assessment. So, that's what makes up each town's town assessment. Any questions on town assessments? Yes.
We had heard last time, or a time before, from Paris about the cuts in the Title I and RBTs. I was just wondering, after, after that meeting, where do we stand, like, pre-COVID? Because there was a lot of positions that were added through grant funding, and I'm just curious, like, if we're kind of back to where we were, or?
We're not back to where we were. We were able to move some of our, if you remember, we do still have a little bit of our S R III funds that we're using for next year to help offset. But we're using some of these other funds, like rural aid, to help keep some of the positions that were set by S R.
So, yeah.
We're not, we're not.
We're not eliminating all the ones that were hired.
Correct.
Right, and this is last year of S R III.
This, so S R III has to be used by September 2024, which is upcoming September. The last piece of the, the budget puzzle is our capital budget. This has not changed $1. So, year over year, it's a decrease of $3,674. The big change in some of the towns, because some are seeing an increase, others are seeing a large decrease. We have three projects left on the books. One is Becca, Washington, for one more year. We have a Wocona renovation that will come off in FY29, and then the Wocona building project in FY47. For these smaller towns, as their students move through the high school, if they have more, less students going out as seniors and more coming in ninth grade, it does change year to year. Could be pretty drastically, but. And that is the budget. Are there any questions?
Okay. We've got some motions. Just as a reminder, this is the official budget, and we need a two-thirds majority to pass these budgets. So, I'll.
All right, so, one. Final fiscal year 2025 gross salaries and benefits of adoption. Whereas, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee on February 8th, 2024, adopted a tentative gross salaries contractual salary increase for all employees and active employees insurance benefits budget for the school year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $20,292,285.
Second.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a final gross salary contractual salary increases for all employees and active employee insurance benefits budget for the school year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $20,53,334, as recommended by the Finance Subcommittee.
I'll try seconding that again.
Okay, motion is second. Just a reminder, I think there's some folks that probably should abstain on the salaries pieces of this, I think, just as a reminder. Any questions?
Just, just to clarify, the people who are abstaining still are part of the number of the two-thirds, correct?
Yep, that's for the final.
Yeah, that's final. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craftries?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso? Bonnie?
She's still there?
Sorry, yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Abstain.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Abstain.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Abstain.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
So, number two, final fiscal year 2025.
I just wanted to count that.
15 minus three.
Yeah, we have 12. 12, so motion carries.
All right, so number two, fiscal year 2025 retirees benefits adoption. Whereas, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee on February 8th, 2024, adopted a tentative retirees health insurance benefit budget for the school year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $2,242,786. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a final retirees health insurance benefit budget for the school year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $2,242,786, as recommended by the Finance Subcommittee.
Second. Okay, motion is second. Any questions on this one? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craftries?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Abstaining.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Abstain.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries that one, 13, two extensions, no, nobody's on that.
Next up. Number three, final fiscal, uh, final fiscal year 2025 operating budget adoption. Whereas, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee on February 8th, 2024, adopted a tentative gross operating budget for the school year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $31,227,719. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a final gross operating budget for the school year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $30,993,748, as recommended by the Finance Subcommittee. Be it further resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a final anticipated revenue budget for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $30,993,748, as recommended by the Finance Subcommittee.
Second. Motion is second. Any questions?
Actually, I just have a comment. First of all, I really want to thank the Finance Committee for getting that increase down to 2.01. But the other thing that I wanted to say is, I, last night at the Curriculum Subcommittee, Assistant Superintendent Hanol shared an anecdote about the math interventionist at the high school who's actually able to go through and look at do-nows from every single student and, you know, pretty much immediately identify those who have not been able to master a particular standard and go back and reteach that skill to them. And what that tells me is what we all know, which is that the biggest bang for our buck in terms of education is people. And this budget, we need interventionists. We especially need interventionists for SEL skills. And so, I hope that in next year's budget, we can try to get a little bit more creative in the ways that we sort of budget our money to be able to get some additional intervention, and that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craftries?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
Number four, final fiscal year 2025 capital budget adoption. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a final capital budget for the school year 2024 to 2025 in the amount of $2,94,850, as recommended by the Finance Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments on this one?
I have a question. The, uh, as far as the, it's not specifically on this budget, but as we look to approve this budget for capital expenditures, has Subcommittee or will finance, kind of look at upcoming capital expenditures on like a one, three, five-year thing? We have, like, we have three schools that are nearing 30 years on their roofs.
Yes.
So, it just, just so the towns know going forward, or, and we know going forward, kind of what our expenses are for those big-ticket items.
Yeah, I assume so, and that's definitely something in our next Finance Committee that we can work together if we don't already have it.
Um, so we actually, it might have been before, which, we have looked at a five-year, actually a six-year plan of what capital projects. So, now that budget season's over, we're gonna, I think, add it to every.
Hey, you have time to do more budget.
Well, now, we have more time in those meetings, so it's something we want to look at each, each meeting, just kind of see where we're at.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you.
Any else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craftries?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Misty Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas? Dr. Jelinas?
Yes, sorry.
It's okay. Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Well, anything else? All right, yeah, you already went through that. Okay, next up is policy.
All right, this one should be very quick. We met on March 6th at Nessicus to continue our review of Section B with Liz LeFond from MASC. Most of that discussion involved incorporation of the existing bylaws into other sections of the policy manual. And we spent, you know, a significant amount of time discussing sort of the specifics of how we wanted to lay out, how our committee would meet, and also how our subcommittees would be formed and their responsibilities assigned. We did not finish Section B, so we will continue that review at our next meeting on April 3rd at 6:30 at Nessicus, where we will hopefully finish Section B and possibly begin reviewing Section C.
Any questions? Seeing none? Okay, moving on. Next up is personnel.
I have no report.
Safety and wellness.
Safety and wellness met on March 7th. We got a illness update from Head Nurse Kelly Jean Gallagher. She reported that the winter break led to a calm down of illness throughout the district, and schools are currently seeing GI illnesses, higher, higher than usual cases of pink eye, lower numbers of strep than usual, and a quote-unquote "spring cold" going on. Right now, there are at-home COVID tests available for anyone who needs one or wants one, and can be sent home. She also reported that while CDC has changed its five-day quarantine recommendation for COVID infections, the district is required to follow a different guidance set by the state. So, when this specific guidance has been changed, the schools will change it at that point. The current district rule for any student who is sick is that they must be 24 hours fever-free with no medication before they may return to school. After that, we also had a presentation from the Director of Food Services, John Trent Fablia, and he presented on the per-meal budget increase of $4, or $2, $4.38 for lunches and $2.73 for breakfast, to match with federal regulations. He explained that this increase will impact students and families only when they purchase a second meal, but it gives the Food Services Department a much larger budget to do things such as improve daily variety of fruits and vegetables available to students, provide healthier food options such as whole meat, brown rice more frequently, and newer items such as fish and whole beef, which, as opposed to ground beef. To also create clearer and more descriptive menus with more variety, such as a seven-week rotating menu instead of a five-week, and work on greater promotion for food services website, including pictures of meals offered at all five schools. He also said that that larger budgets will help hire staff to fill previously unfilled slots and to improve kitchen infrastructure as needed, such as ideas that he had were the kitchen equipment at Kittredge, a specific oven at Craneville, a steamer or steam kettle at Nessicus, and a variety of smaller things. Beyond that, our next meeting is on, will be on Thursday, April 5th, and we'll be looking to discuss the district's second quarter bullying infractions report. And then, we have two different topics. We're not sure how we're gonna split it up at this time. Preventive sports safety and injury and concussion protocol, and those will be with the Athletic Director, Ally Borowski. I believe it's, I guess it's called, Borowski, and Head Nurse Kelly Jean.
Any questions?
The only thing I want to add to is that John is gonna be reaching out to principals to schedule some family nights so that we can get some input from families for lunches as well.
So, we increased the cost of lunch. My understanding was that the, uh, the choices that are offered was also gonna increase in accordance with, do we know when that's?
Uh, he said that as of April, that they're looking, they can, he's already started some of the newer vegetables and stuff with specifically at Becca, Washington, I think he said. But a lot of the new variety stuff, he said, starting April is when those things are gonna start improving. And then, the seven-week menu is gonna be starting next school year.
Right, yeah, I just assumed they'd be working through some backstock and get to that, but, good.
Any else? Okay, thank you. Next up is the Wocona Bully Project, nothing to report there, the Regional Aha Report. We've been waiting to hear back from DESI. We've heard from Jay today, actually, that we should hear back from DESI preliminarily next. We've heard from Jay today, actually, that we should hear back from DESI preliminarily next week, but we have, we have to get the language out to the towns. So I think, Leslie, did you get an answer from Russ that we can use that?
Yes, so we, I went to two different sources to make sure we could have a warrant on the towns. And what, so I went to Mars and also Attorney Dupre. Both Mars and Attorney Dupre assured me that we can go to the towns with some language, which Mars is crafting for us. And then we also run by Attorney Dupre. That will be sent to the towns probably tomorrow afternoon. And we can actually ask them to put that on their agendas just prior to final approval by DESI. So that is the plan right now.
Yeah, and so when we get final approval, I mean, we just need to be, have the language on the warrants forty-five days ahead, but we don't have to have that document there. But as soon as we get the document, we'll send that out to all the towns and everybody else. Any questions, comments?
Will we, the regional ad hoc committee, will we be discussing kind of strategy or how to go to, you know, for members of that committee to go to different town meetings and answer questions, is Jay? Yeah, how, how are we gonna handle that at the town meetings so that we can inform the residents, we can answer questions?
I mean, I'm at all the town meetings, and I think there's only one that I won't be at this year. Greg is at the town meetings, and usually there's a school committee member that comes to the town meetings, and many of our school committee members have been on, were on the regional ad hoc. So I would anticipate that each town meeting will be individuals that can answer the questions. I mean, I can answer most of them, I'm pretty sure. And like I said, a lot of our school committee members will be able to answer them as well.
Just, just something to think about, because there's, there's, there's a lot in there.
Yeah, I would, I would think that, I mean, we can reach out to them. I would think there would be an interest. Those, those individuals that were on the regional ad hoc are usually individuals that are pretty active in their town government. So I would anticipate, knowing that committee, that many of them will be there.
I was also gonna say that, I mean, the regional ad hoc committee hasn't met, because it's part of a much larger group, not just this school group, right? And there hasn't been a need for them to meet, and I don't know that there will be, but I'm just waiting for DESI to get back to us in case they come back with anything substantive that requires opening it all up again, which I don't anticipate any of that because we work through Mars. So, and they have a direct line to DESI, so I think we should be okay in that respect, but I'm still waiting for their final answer, for sure.
There is some discussion in Beckett about moving the time of the meeting, so as soon as I hear definitively, I'll let you know.
For their town meeting, yeah, okay, for sure.
They were talking in the afternoon.
Oh, not the date?
No.
Just the time of it?
Just the time.
Oh, okay, cool. Anything else? Another question? Okay. Next up is the superintendent evaluation ad hoc.
Okay, well, we met on February twenty-sixth, and all of our members were present with the superintendent, and the purpose of the meeting was to comply with the task of meeting quarterly with the superintendent to review progress and goals. And Leslie provided us with a PowerPoint presentation that I will share with you next time after we meet the second time. So I'll share that with you then, and that served as her guide to her work towards the school committee approved goals. Relative to goal one, student achievement, Leslie shared hallmarks of effective instruction, the work towards implementation of a new literacy curriculum, and the four-to-see, four-to-six-week walkthrough schedule. In terms of goal two, Leslie shared the efforts being made relative to the district improvement plan, the portrait of a graduate work survey, and the PNA, and that stands for prevention needs assessment data. The work relevant to goal three, Leslie provided information regarding the self-free learning environment and the district wellness advisory board. She additionally shared specific information regarding ways in which she regularly communicates with the administrative team, the staff, the families, as well as the CBRSD school committee. We'll be meeting again late May, early June, date to be determined, and Leslie will provide us at that point with her end-of-the-year summer report. And just as an aside, the ad hoc committee was very positive about the impressions about the progress being made, and we totally thank Leslie for being so transparent. Did I miss anything? Okay.
Any questions? All right, thank you, see you then, all right. We're up to old business, any old business? Any new business? Remarks of the committee?
The Read Across America was just really fun. So we had a good time. I had a good time at Beckett, Washington, I know that you went to Beckett, Washington, too.
Yeah, I'd never been there before, it was totally, yeah, it was cool, and they had some cool things that the principal was showing us.
Thanks for doing that.
Sure.
And I got to go to Beckett, Washington, and Kittredge, and I just, the kids were just terrific, and it was a really rewarding experience, so thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie, please.
This coming Saturday is the Berkshire Innovative Center's robotics challenge, and it's being hosted here at Wilcona. And I would be there, I'm very excited to see it.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craftries?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Eberwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Forella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion adjourned. Thank you all for, we have a budget, and that's good discussion, everybody.